Planning and Zoning Commission Board Meeting, March 3, 2016, 10:00 a.m., Sanford City Hall, City Commission Room.
The City of Sanford Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for March 3, 2016 is now in session. I'd like to take a moment of silence, followed by a pledge allegiance to get our meeting started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you call a roll, please?
Steve Essler.
Here.
Michael Loder.
Here.
Jerry Mills. Cassandra Bowie.
Here.
Lindsay O'Wally. O'Wally, rather, sorry.
I'm here both times.
Okay. Eddie Green. Joshua Dane.
Here.
I did receive an email from Mr. Mills stating he had a doctor's appointment and he wasn't able to reschedule it. And Mr. Green has a 9 o'clock business meeting in the land. He was going to try and make it after that, but at this point, he's not here.
I move to approve or for approval of excuse for both.
Second.
Do we have a first and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Can I make one statement? I'm listed as unexcused, I think, or it doesn't say excused by me on there.
In the motion, it was unexcused.
Yeah. But I, when we, when we rescheduled in the January meeting, I said at that point, at that time, I was not going to be able to make the February meeting if we rescheduled to the second Thursday.
That's probably correct. That's my error.
Okay.
So we will have to amend the minutes?
We can amend the minutes. That's correct.
Can I get a new motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, Joshua.
That's all right.
We'll now go to the public hearings. The first is a developmental plan to consider the final plat for the replat parcel one South Gate at 1550 Reinhardt Road. Eileen?
Okay. The subject property, 1550 Reinhardt Road, is located on the west side of Reinhardt Road between St. John's Parkway and WP Ball Boulevard. The applicant has submitted a final plat to modify the existing parcel one, create four lots to further the South Gate development, and allow for individual ownership of the smaller parcels. The plat would result in four parcels that share cross-access, ingress egress, drainage, and utility easements. This is a minor subdivision plan to break up the initial lot one of the South Gate subdivision. It is staff's recommendation that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the final plat for South Gate property parcel one replat based on consistency with the city's subdivision regulations and compliance with Chapter 177 of the state statutes, subject to the plat meeting all legal and technical requirements as determined by the city attorney and the city surveyor prior to being recorded.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions of staff? No questions?
I don't have any questions.
With no questions, is there a representative present that would like to speak in favor? Please state your name and address.
Yes, good morning. For the record, my name is Richard Wolfarth with the IBI Group, representing the applicant. If there are any questions, I can address them when they're asked.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Are there any questions from the board at this time? Anyone here to speak against? As it seems no one's here to speak against, I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
I do have one question. What's meant by small-scale development? What is there, does that have a legal definition or?
Well, in our code, subdivisions are broken up into like minor subdivisions and then full-scale subdivisions. The minor subdivisions are intended to create parcels that work together, but without creating infrastructure such as streets, roads, city-owned stormwater and stuff like that. So this being part of an existing subdivision that has all of that, it's just a minor subdivision to further divide a lot. But in order to prevent people from just dividing lots at random, we have this minor subdivision process to allow us to review for things like cross-access and cross-drainage.
Okay.
And then put it on a plat and it's all recorded together.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
I have no further questions.
Okay, with no further questions, I open it up for a motion. I move to approve the final plat for South Gate property parcel one replat based on consistency with the city's subdivision regulations and compliance with Chapter 177 of the state statutes, subject to the plat meeting, subject to the plat meeting all legal, technical requirements as determined by the city attorney and city surveyor prior to being recorded.
Second.
We have a first, we have a motion by Mr. Loder, a second by Cassandra Bowie. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Thank you. The developmental plan number two is considered the final plat for the Sanford Partners replat at 4243 North US Highway 1792. Eileen?
Okay. The subject property, which includes the retail establishment Just Breaks and the former Family Dollar Store, it has multiple retail bays, an address range of 4231 to 4243 North US Highway 1792. It's located on the east side of US Highway 1792, immediately south of County Home Road. The applicant has submitted a final plat to split lot two of the Paradise plat to allow for individual ownership of the two smaller parcels. The plat would result in two new parcels that would share cross-access, ingress egress, drainage, and utility easements. This one is similar to the one we just reviewed in the fact that it is a minor subdivision to just further divide an existing plat.
Any questions from board? Is there a representative here to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address.
I'm Derek Obershaw, 5792 Olmerton Road in Clearwater, here to represent the applicant.
Okay.
And answer any questions if you have any.
And y'all have received the staff report concerning this matter?
Yes.
And confer with any, concur or have any questions?
No.
Okay. At this point, if there's any questions of the board? No questions? Anyone else speak in favor? Anyone to speak in objection? That being said, we'll open it up for discussion. With no discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the final plat for Sanford Partners replat based on the consistency with the city's subdivision regulations and compliance with Chapter 177 of the state statute, subject to the plat meeting all legal and technical requirements as determined by the city attorney and city surveyor prior to being recorded.
Second.
We have a motion and a second motion by Cassandra Bowie, a second by Mike Loder. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimous. We move on now to our public hearings. Our first is public hearing number one. This is a quasi-judicial matter and as such requires disclosure of all exporté communications, investigation site visits, and expert opinions regarding this matter. Does anyone have any? No one has any expertise? The applicant is requesting to rezone 0.97 acres located at 1199 Upsala Road from AG Agriculture to RI1 Restricted Industrial.
The 0.97 acre site is located at the southeast quadrant of Upsala Road and Smith Canal Road. The applicant proposes to remove the vacant and dilapidated single-family residences as soon as permits can be obtained. On February 8, 2016, the City Commission adopted ordinance 4366 to annex the property into the city. The applicant has since petitioned to rezone the property from the agricultural zoning to a restricted industrial zoning for future industrial development. Although not required, the applicant has provided a conceptual development plan to better understand the proposed development and that you have in your packet. The rezone that they are proposing is consistent with the underlying land use. It is staff's recommendation that the City Commission enact an ordinance to rezone 0.97 acres with a project address of 1199 Upsala Road from agriculture to restricted industrial based on the crest being consistent with the future land use designation.
Thank you. Questions of the board? If no questions?
Actually, I think I do have a question, and I probably should know this, but what is restricted industrial?
We have two straight zoning industrial categories within the city. One of them is a restricted industrial, one is a medium industrial. The restricted industrial is for more light warehouse, office, some distribution, and light manufacturing, whereas the medium industrial classification has a little more higher intensities permitted to it. So this is for the restricted industrial zone. I'm not sure if I answered your question before.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you. So it will be more, like you said, warehouse?
Yeah, it's for office, warehouse, some lighter industrial uses. You know, it's not intended for junkyard-type stuff or outdoor activities without additional approvals. It's indoor-type activities that you would see in an industrial park.
I have a question. The total tax property or tax bill on the property in 2015 was 221168. If annexed into the city, it's going to generate an estimated 1,04742. Is that just due to the difference in the mileage rates between Seminole County and the city? Why the tax bill would be lower than what it was last year?
Oh, the additional, yes, it's to the city. That amount is the city's portion.
Okay.
Not the total tax bill.
Okay.
That's the resulting additional added on taxes from the annex.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
And it was annexed. I think that was an artifact leftover from the annexation staff report.
Good. Any other questions?
No questions.
Mr. Reynolds? Please step up, state your name and address.
My name is Jack Reynolds, 312 Forest Avenue, Altamont Springs. I'm representing the property owner, and I've read staff's report and recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
How many times have you done this before?
Oh, few. I'm so glad to be doing it, though, believe me.
Any questions?
Was there a cap meeting?
Excuse me?
Was there a cap meeting?
No, ma'am.
No.
Have the, Russ, cap meeting was not required?
No, we recognize that the straight zoning of this property was consistent with the surrounding zoning and land uses and that this public hearing would notify the same parties that would be contacted by the applicant, so.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, not of the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Staff, what is the general area where this proposed site is? Is it mostly business? Is that an apartment complex that I see there?
Yeah, it's at the corner of Upsala Road. It's just north of the Specialty Point Industrial Park that's out on Upsala. There's the series of warehouses that are all under construction. The aerial doesn't show all of the ones that are there.
Right.
And we've gotten word that there's a few more being built on the southern end in short order.
This is Smith Canal running east-west on the north border of the subject property. And in the lands on the southeast quadrant of Smith Canal, Upsala Road running north-south here is really an extension of the Sanford Central Park, North Star Business Park, and Cadisco, which are all consistent with the restricted industrial zoning and the character of businesses and development we anticipate would take place on the subject property if it was rezoned to RI1.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this? With no one here? Board discussion? I'm going to entertain a motion. I move to recommend the City Commission enact an ordinance to rezone 0.97 acres with, or acre with project address of 1199 Upsala Road from AG Agricultural to RI1 Restricted Industrial based on request being consistent with the future land use designation.
I second.
We have a motion from Mike Loder, a second from Lindsay. Vote?
Yea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Or yea.
Thank you. Now I'll go to public hearing number two. This is a quasi-judicial matter and as such requires disclosure of all exporté communications, investigations, site visits, any expert opinions regarding this matter. Is there anyone?
No.
No? Okay. A conditional use request to establish vehicular repair at 2016 Sanford Avenue for the purpose of expanding their automobile sales and service business, which is on adjacent property to the north, has been received.
Okay. The subject property is located at 2618 Sanford Avenue. It's owned by ETS Autos. There are three parcels, two of them are vacant, one of them has a 1,084 square foot single-family structure built in 1930, and a 360 square foot single-family structure built in 1940. Property is located between Sanford Avenue and Palmetto Avenue, between 26th and 27th Street. On February 8, 2016, the City Commission adopted ordinance 4362 to annex the property. Pursuant to Schedule B, a minor conditional use is required for vehicular repair in the general commercial zoning district. The applicant has submitted a request to establish vehicle repair at this location in order to expand their automobile sales and service business on the adjacent property to the north. The conditional use would allow ETS Autos, Inc. to build an additional building to provide automobile repair services to be used in conjunction with their existing ETS Auto, Inc. facility. At this time, the applicant has proposed the expansion for the purpose of being able to provide automotive repair services for their inventory. The conceptual plan that was submitted shows the new repair facility and allows automotive services to the inventory automobiles on the adjacent site. The development review team reviewed the request. It finds that it meets the standards for consideration and recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the conditional use request to establish vehicular repair at 2618 Sanford Avenue, subject to a development order with the conditions before you, in addition to a few conditions that we have brought before us today based on some information from outside interested parties. I'm going to read you what those additional conditions are. You guys have the first 10 before you.
Yes.
Further consideration of staff has determined that based on the interconnectivity of the two sites, a unity of title should be required to combine the sites until some future date when separation may be in the interest of the property owner. At that time, we can do like the minor plots we did earlier in the meeting, something along those lines to guarantee that the cross-connectivity and the access to driveways and such are there. But at this time, a unity of title should be required. Per the applicant's interest, we received information from the applicant, and they can speak to it when they come before you. They had questioned whether or not they could have any vehicles outside on this site because the condition before you, number five, says that they can't have any vehicles outside. If you were to consider the option, a fence should be required along the parking areas on Palmetto Avenue side of the site with any outside storage of vehicles being serviced to areas behind the fence and only on paved areas as depicted on the site plan. This would be consistent with some approvals that we've done on other similar sites. And then per a nearby property owner's concern about noise of the possibility of the repair of said vehicles, other conditions that we have included on similar type sites would be that there should be no automobile-related work or any similar activities creating noise on the premise before 7:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m. And then any activities on the premise shall be restricted to indoors. I'm not sure on this if they're planning to do any painting activities, but if painting activities include touch-ups, these activities should be restricted to indoors with paint booths, subject to the paint booth being inspected, certified, and maintained in compliance with all applicable building and environmental requirements to ensure that there will be no outdoor odor emissions. So those are, those are additional conditions that you guys may want to consider based on input that we've received since the report was released.
Thank you. Questions of the board? Yeah, I got a couple. Automobile, automobile sales and service business, is this a service business that's going to be open to the public or just a service business that is going to be servicing their, the cars that they will be selling?
The information that we've received from the applicant, we're under the impression that it is for their inventory, but I guess when they come to speak, they can further answer that question for you, what their intent for this is. The request before you is for automobile repair, so it's not restricted to their inventory, but that is their intent at this time. If we approve automobile repair, there's no restriction in the approval that says it's solely for them.
Also, as far as reference to the vehicles being left out front, based on the site plan, I mean, there's, looks like about 20 parking spaces right along Sanford Avenue with a building right behind it. So, I mean, I don't see how you could say there's not going to be any vehicles allowed on premises if you've got 20 parking spaces right along Sanford Avenue.
The intent is not for them to not be on premise. The intent is for the vehicles that are being repaired to not be left outside, like on-site outside. If they're working on vehicles, they should be in the building. It's a fairly large building.
Right. Also, is this site concurrent with the property that is an existing used car sales?
Yes, this is, this site is owned by the same owner of the auto dealer sales that's to the north. They're looking to expand onto this site for the repair facilities.
Mr. Loder, on the aerial, there is a photo.
Right.
This morning, so this is the existing ETS Auto sales building that was approved by the city. It's in the city. And then to the left, and this is the vacant lot that they're proposing to create the auto.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. Actually, I was reading that background wrong. I was thinking that in this wording, this lot, the site that's under consideration was to the north, and I know that the, but I was reading it wrong.
For, for.
And I know they, I know the sale property, where they sell cars is to the north, not the.
Correct. Just for reference, though, the site immediately north of the ETS Auto sales is not in the city.
Okay. That's fine. Any else have questions?
Yes, if we can go back to the picture that shows the vehicles on that truck right there. So who do those cars belong to? Is that part of sale, repair? What is the status of those vehicles?
Well, again, I took these photos this morning and first noted this on the site. It's my assumption these are owned and a part of the ETS Auto business. The applicant can perhaps validate that, but.
Is there any part of the, I've heard the recommendations, the recommendations don't address the leaving of vehicles out of that nature. I'm assuming that's prohibited?
Correct. I will also share with the commission that staff has notified and is working with our code enforcement department, all due to other current violations associated with the existing ETS Auto facility. For example, all of these banners and signage, those are specifically, A, prohibited, and then I think it's also conditions of the, well, the recommended conditions on the site that you're considering today, but I think there were similar conditions for the site that was approved. So it's regrettable that we're having to have to consider taking code enforcement actions to get the existing site into compliance. We certainly are recommending conditions before you today to ensure those non-compliant issues are not allowed on the, are clearly understood not allowed on the future expansion if approved. That would be condition number.
Three, the banners, streamers, et cetera. And also, which condition? Condition number five would address this issue that I'm looking at right now. Okay. And, and you had a clarification or a request of the applicant as it related to leaving some vehicles outside? Maybe I didn't understand you.
Okay, yeah, they had contacted us. Unfortunately, we played phone tag and email tag back and forth for a couple days. So I'm not sure as to the exact specifics of what they're, they're looking for, but the correspondence that we did exchange was there was some question about the ability to store vehicles on the site, the new site, after hours outside of the provisions that are in number five, which says anything outside of normal business operating hours needs to be inside on this site.
Okay.
So they were questioning whether or not they can have some of their inventory vehicles on the repair site outside of business hours.
Okay.
So what I read to you was a potential solution to that, just for your consideration. Right now, the staff report is written with the outdoor storage and display not being allowed on this site outside of normal business hours, so.
And then, once the development of the auto repair structure, that issue will not come before the board because of our guidelines, correct? So they will follow our new guidelines as it relates to the actual structure?
If the guidelines are in place by then.
If the guy, if they're in place by then. If not, then the actual structure and landscaping and all those issues will come back before the board?
Well, the engineering plan is to staff approval.
Okay.
Unless there's something that doesn't comply with the code as required. So you most likely won't see it unless they need to seek additional variances. There's, I mean, there's, there's nothing in the code that requires them to come before you if they meet the rest of code. What's before you right now is the ability to use the property for this automotive use.
Any other questions? I have a couple that I think could address. First clarification is, is you have the north property, which is the existing ETS Auto. We're considering the south property under our.
We're considering the south property under our PH2. As I read this and as I understand it, the PH2 property is to create a auto repair business, to create an auto repair shop. Being separate properties, I am under the impression that what is now being used for sales, the existing ETS, that would not permit sales to take place on a PH2 at this time? Okay, so there could be no sales, it would just be repair?
........................................................................................................................................................................... However, when this was presented as a cap meeting point, the neighbors in, in the vicinity are under the impression it's strictly an in-house for them. It's not going to have people coming in as a retail repair business.
Mr. Chairman, that is a condition that, or qualification to the condition that this board can make in terms of stipulating that it is for the repairs to the associated sales facility.
Only because that's where it was presented, presented in the advertisements and everything. The next question, again, we talked about no auto sales, the cap description, the just repairs. Comment was made that no vehicles can be parked in the dirt. It has to be parked on solid surface concrete or asphalt, or concrete, I think is what you said, Eileen?
Yeah, that was in the potential condition as in...
Right, yeah, an added condition.
Right, and it, what I had recommended, or what the recommendation I had read says that a fence would be required along all parking areas on Palmetto's side of the site. Any outdoor storage of vehicles needs to use that side of the site. And then it's for the service vehicles to be left outside overnight and only on paved areas as depicted on the site plan. So no, no parking in the dirt. I mean, that's...
Yeah.
When we do a site plan, that's not permitted anyway.
I understand.
That's sort of a clarification within the condition.
The point I'm making is that right now, if this, whatever way this ends up, and it, let's say it ends up positive, then the point being is that that property technically can't be used for any type of vehicle storage until it's improved.
Correct.
Because of what the dirt, yeah, because of the concrete statement in there.
He means the vacant piece that's there.
The vacant piece of property, PH2.
No, no use.
All right, okay, that was one there. And let me see, here goes one more. In regards to parking, and as it states in the requirements, that no vehicles can be left overnight, they have to be within a facility of some sort, and you address that. When I look at the site plan, which is a future possible construction, there's a certain amount of square footage of building that requires parking. And I guess that would just be more defined at time of construction or as far as the application, because traditionally that would be...
Right, so many spaces per square footage of use depending on the use, if portions of it are office or portions of it are, you know, storage areas and some are repair areas. We have, the parking would be a function of that, and the building would be determined based on its parking.
Requires, let's say, 30 parking spaces, concrete, and we have 50 concrete parking spaces. Can those parking spaces be designated what is for what, or it doesn't matter? In other words, you've got quite a few parking spaces in the back and along the side, which with unity of title can be done because you're encroaching into the old ETS property.
Right, it appears that some of those parking spaces are being reconfigured for the new site based on the location of the building.
Right, which with unity of title makes it easy to do. Okay. All right, I will try to keep this meeting going now. Any other questions? Is there a representative present to speak? If you would please state your name and address?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Witczunyak at 311 South Windland Boulevard, Deland. I'm the engineer record. Just as a clarification, I don't know where it went, something got misunderstood. The goal of this particular site plan is so they can do onsite repair of the inventory he's going to be bringing in. And the front parking area was always designed to be laid out as display parking for cars he is trying to sell. That's what we presented at our cap meeting, that's what was presented to staff. I don't know, somewhere in the, something got off kilter. This is not open to the public to come bring your car in and have an oil change or a paint job. This is only to repair cars that he is physically bringing into the site to sell, no different than how he's operating his current business on the north side. We have no objection to bringing the parcels into one piece. I know that was covered. The fence, I have, we have no objection. He currently has fencing on the Palmetto side, and we would carry it on just to protect the inventory that's on site. And anything that's, you know, being repaired at night will be done inside the building. That's the function of building. This building is not fully designed as of yet, it's still conceptual, but it's going to have four roll-up doors, so the work can be done inside the building. I believe that was kind of the gist of your comments. I'm, I'm here to answer as many comments, questions as you have, though.
The, the parking along Sanford Avenue in front of the proposed building, is that designed to be display parking for vehicles to be sold as well as over on the existing property?
Yes, sir. If you actually go back to the aerial, or you can even see it on the site plan, the, the display area in front of the existing ETS Auto is rather small. I think there's maybe 10 spaces. So this was kind of an ideal spot to carry the display so you have a true display area.
Does there need to be anything in this public hearing, though, to allow the sale of vehicles in the, on that, on this property that's being considered? I mean, I don't have anything against it, but I don't think there's anything in this hearing that addresses that.
Russell, you going to take that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the information that we have submitted from the applicant for the requests being considered by the commission this morning is for the auto repair. And as such, the public hearing and notices stated that use only as far as what is being requested. So again, if there was misunderstanding or misrepresentation, it's based on the application and materials submitted to the city for the auto repair use, and the public hearing was processed accordingly. So if there is interest of the property owner applicant to establish the auto sales or expand the auto sales from the 2612, the existing site, to 2618, which is before you today, they will have to perhaps amend their application or submit a separate application in that respect. And so leave that to the applicant as it relates to whether he wants to proceed with what's before you today or address your client's overall objective.
If your client, I think, if, based on what you're saying, if your client wants to use the, the part of the property facing Sanford Avenue in front of the repair facility for sales, there need to, going to be, come back with an amended proposal or amended request to the city. Would they go to staff first, I presume?
Yes.
To amend their request to include auto sales facing Sanford Avenue?
And I, and I would assume that a cap meeting needs to be redone so that those who may be affected are aware of the potential uses of this property, because that does not appear to have been the case thus far.
But we already had our cap meeting in October. Now, I, I ran the cap meeting. We had three people show up, and I explained it clearly what we were doing. This was never meant as to be a repair facility.
Mr. Chairman, can I do something?
I think it's important for the record, I don't like to read flunky things, but let me read something real quick. This is the written explanation justification for the conditional use, and it's in your agenda packet.
Right.
But I think it's important to read on the record. ETS Autos Inc. is applying for the conditional use for the address of 2618 Sanford Avenue located in Sanford, Florida. The conditional use would allow ETS Autos Inc. to build an additional building to provide automobile repair service, services to the inventory belonging to the existing ETS Autos Inc. The public facilities and services available to ETS Autos Inc. and the proposed additional building are adequate to serve the new proposed use. There are no adverse effects known, including any architectural, historical, cultural resources. And I won't read the entirety of the third paragraph, but the last sentence of that third paragraph says, "ETS Autos has been an existing business and is only expanding their business to include an automobile repair service for their inventory." So that, that's the confines of this application.
Correct. So we either vote on that, or they pull it out and start over?
If the intent is to have a sales facility, then I would think that this isn't the application that you want to prove. You might want to start back from scratch. And if it is a sales facility, and I don't mean to interject any argument one way or the other, if it is a sales facility, you have a code enforcement issue to the north, so you're asking to expand an existing code issue.
Violation.
That's, that's an issue also.
It's definitely an issue in my eyes, but do you want to move forward on your application, or would you rather amend and start over? That's really your choice.
Well, me personally, I'd actually rather go forward, because if you're going to make me come back through, I can come back for a second conditional use, is that correct? And the reason I would say that is because I'm ready to submit my site plan. If I start from scratch, I add, let's say, 60 days of the clock. During construction, can I be doing this exact same approach at my own risk that we couldn't get the sales portion of it?
I can't give you advice on that.
But that's a timing issue, is that not correct?
Well, you're right, that's not really for y'all to engage in, but the applicant can proceed with this application for this particular use, which is servicing vehicles.
Right.
I think it would be important, or I think it might be prudent for the commission to ask the applicant to commit that those spaces that have been articulated to be intended for vehicle sales will not be used for vehicle sales should you approve this conditional use for servicing the vehicles.
Well, that would be an additional condition that I'd want to add.
It's an unnecessary condition because it's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
It just might be prudent to get the commitment on the record.
Okay. Do you understand that, sir?
I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm just looking at it from a timing standpoint, what is going to be my fastest route, because the whole intent of this is for him to have the display.
Well, we can, we can approve this, we can approve this for auto repair as requested. If he determines and he wants to display vehicles for sale, then he's going to be dealing with code enforcement and code violations for doing that.
Correct, and I understand that portion of it. And if I, with, regardless if I want sales, I have to either A, start over, B, accept your proposal, or C, come back a third time, is that...
Let me ask, let me ask staff. If we approve this, and he starts construction on the repair facility and goes forward with that, can he, between now and then, or during that process, come back and ask for additional or conditional request to do auto sales on the front of that property at that time?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I have a further question. If we, if one of the members makes a motion and includes that it's, this motion is based of express, explicitly denying vehicle display for sale on the new porch, on this, on this property, does that change him coming back later to see it? Because now he's violating one of the main consuls of it.
You can't deny something before it's applied for, so...
True.
It's, it's...
Basically, proceeds his own risk.
It would be an unlawful use if they were to start having vehicle sales on the, on the property.
Right. But this may also be helpful, conservative agreement, if it's approved, but if there are conditions that were approved today, it doesn't inhibit the applicant when he might come back to the city in the future to request another use, that those conditions that were approved in the past might get amended, deleted, or changed in some capacity. So that, that is a scenario that could play out.
Can I ask one more question, please? In looking at the site plan, which is up there now, if we could, the, technically, the property line between the existing ETS Auto and the future construction, can city and staff, in other words, you said you're working, you've, you're trying to fast-track, get this thing going.
Yes, sir.
This plan, as it sits on the display today, is that still the general intent of your descriptions for what's going to be built?
Yes.
Okay. My question to staff then is this, if we are voting, if we are approving, if, or denying, whatever we may do, on this singular parcel, and his, in the descriptive for construction includes parking encroaching into a separate parcel of land that's not part of this land, can that technically be looked at by staff because you have two different parcels? I'm, I just, I'm trying to get clarity on that, because I understand moving forward and in construction, I know time is of the essence. However, what's showing here, to me, looks like it would require unity of title because it has cross-parking easements, it has cross-retention easements, and cross-driveway easements. And unless you unify the title, can you actually submit this for construction or for approval by staff to go to construction, knowing that part of it's on one piece of land, although they own both pieces, ones, they're both GC, they're both commercial?
Sure.
But there's two of different uses or two different occupations?
Staff can and would review a site plan for the entire property owned by ETS Autos, and the improvements that would be considered would have to be consistent with the underlying zoning approvals. So the, the north side, the existing ETS Auto site would, is the only area, land area that would be allowed for auto sales or display. So if they present a site plan for the site that might be approved today for repair, and they were showing on their site plan for staff to review and consider for approval, display areas on the south side, we would not be able to approve that site plan. So again, a site plan for the overall ETS Auto properties can be submitted to staff for review. Our approval process would ensure that it's consistent with the uses approved by this, this board, the underlying zone.
So if they wanted to use both pieces of property that they own, that are both in the city, that both have the same GC, general commercial designation, would they have to do a PDE, or?
No, they're...
I guess where, okay.
Again...
With a, it just, everything that's been presented so far is a standalone on the south property. And then all of a sudden, what's trying to be built is a merger of the south with the north property. North property has code violations on it already and things of that nature. I was just trying to get some clarity on that, and we, and then also the discussion comes into is creating another driveway on Palmetto, which also opens up some issues to surrounding properties and all. some issues to surrounding properties and all.
No, we, we were, and we're not suggesting this. We're not suggesting this at all. Staff's report is the staff report and only deals with the, the south property. But we're, based upon the statements about the co-mingling of the uses in terms of sales and the comments y'all made, if you did want to deny based upon a planning principle that the entirety of those parcels, the north and the south, should be under one site plan, that would be a valid reason if you decide to do.
And Mr. Group, may we consider, um, history of code invo- code violations?
No.
Okay.
I think, in, in my opinion, it would be prudent to go.
Well, except, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Except to the extent, I mean, and I'm not being against, the applicant opened the door to some extent by saying, we're going to expand the northern uses to the southern property and the northern uses are code violations. So that, that does open the door.
Right. That's why I asked about.
But you can't just deny based upon, well, you, you, you're a code violator across town or you're.
No.
Right, right, right.
Didn't pay your income tax.
Understanding with sunshine and other.
No Mother's Day card.
As we're, as we're governed, we're supposed to make decisions based off what's on this paper.
That's right.
And what's been provided by staff. But when we start hearing things that have nothing, that aren't included in here, it's, and I, I understand you most, you went through the things with the three people who showed up in a, in a verbal presentation of what y'all were planning. However, for our purposes, what you were planning was to just build a repair building to repair your cars only and nothing else. And then we get a site plan that shows a master improvement to an existing site that we're not even considering on top of a site that's being considered. It puts us into a.
But that whole overall site plan, and I'm not, I, I understand some of the confusion, but you have to remember, there's a conditional use already granted on the northern site. So when I supply an application for a conditional use, I wouldn't reapply an application to the north side. It was never our intent to cause confusion, but I'm not messing with the north side. I'm just asking for a conditional use on the south property, which we annexed into the, the city.
The city for purpose.
And now we're, you know, we accepted the general commercial zoning. This isn't allowed use with a conditional use.
I think that the, the display of cars really was the monkey wrench. I think if we vote on, on what we're looking at today, we can vote on what we're looking at today. Approve it and it can be built just like it's being built within staff's approval. But to do any display at all of sales vehicles, you're going to have to come back and ask for an additional or a conditional, uh, change order, conditional request, conditional use, thank you, and, and, uh, get that approved to be able to go ahead with sales of vehicles on that property, which in my opinion, there would not be any hindrance to that or any objection to that because there's sales of cars, one, you know, two lots up the street with Alan's Auto.
Well, the sale's right next door on our lot.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Whether it's an appropriate use or not, that's another day.
Right. I'm sorry.
So in, in an essence, I gain no benefit for asking a withdrawal at this point. I mean, I might as well, you know, keep trying to move forward with this and come back. I have to go back through the whole process? That means a staff review, Russ? Is that correct? And then I have to put new orange boards up with the word sales on it?
We'll work with you with the right, uh, proc- uh, processing of another public hearing, correct?
Okay.
It's your option, sir.
I'd rather just keep forging forward. I mean, I'm going to have to come back in front of this group one way or the other. I'm here already and I'm not, you know, I'm being 100% truthful with what we're doing. That's the whole goal of this project is for him to expand his business. I, when I use the word sales and service, I, that was our intention is that you're carrying sales and service onto the southern property. We will make it very explicit that there's no way and nobody can not understand that on the next application, obviously.
All right. That being said, the board have any questions of applicant?
Um, I guess I have one question. Um, what will be the normal business hours? Because I know a lot of things had to be done within the normal business hours, like the, you know, outside parking and the painting and all of that. So what are you considering your normal business hours?
I would eventually say eight to five. Every time I've been, um, in the evening, like when we had our cap meeting, they were already gone at, when we started our meeting at around five o'clock.
Just got a follow-up question to Ms. Bowie. Um, eight to five, what days a week?
Uh, that is a good question. I don't know if he's a seven day a week operation. I know the sales is probably, I, I'm guessing, so please don't take it, uh, that I'm giving you wrong information. To me, if it was sales, that should be seven days a week, but service would generally probably be your normal during the week. But I can get the, uh, get that information.
And I guess the biggest question is because it's service of your vehicles, so it doesn't really, you know, it's not like you're going to be open to the public. So it seems like you would be able to work on your vehicles, you would think, anytime you want. So that would, that's the reason for my question as far as the normal business hours and what you would be considering normal business hours. Because you are just working on your vehicles and not the public, general public's vehicles.
I believe in the staff report, they utilize seven to six, and I don't believe the owner would have an objection to that.
The noise ordinance?
But I would suspect that those residents in the surrounding area wouldn't want work done before even 7:00 AM on Saturday morning or Sunday.
We would agree not to do work before 7:00 AM.
Right. I get that. But I don't want you doing work at 8:00 AM on a Saturday morning where noise is being created and I'm living in proximity to that area.
I, not to be disrespectful, have you, this is a highly commercial area. When we've gone, the property to the south of us is commercial, to north of us is commercial, across the street is basically commercial because that's a church, which is commercial. South to us is also more commercial. Everything's commercial around it. I believe there is one or two residential houses in that vicinity.
Okay. And no disrespect taken.
I'm sorry. You know, I've walked that whole area. I've been.
When you, when you had your cap meeting, you said a couple people, only three people showed up. Did they have any concerns? What were their concerns?
There was one, uh, one individual that said, you know, why more cars? You know, there's plenty of car dealerships up and down the strip. Um, gentleman across the street wanted to know, you know, what he was doing because he wanted to capitalize on doing something to his property.
And so what was the response to why more cars?
The owner wanted to expand his business. He's doing really well. It just, he said that he is, his justification was, you know, why more car dealerships? They just didn't have a good use for the site. They just wanted to know why we wanted to expand the car dealership when there's used car dealerships in the north and used car dealerships to the south.
Okay.
And then another gentleman wanted to, uh, he owns some type of, uh, temple by the gas station. He just wanted to see what he could do to his property.
And then, um, fencing, what type of fencing would you have?
We're going to match the fencing that's on the northern side, which happens to be a chain link fence.
I guess the one thing that caught my attention, you are president of EPI?
Yes, I am, sir.
... a letter dated February 9th of the City of Sanford, written explanation justification for conditional use. ETS Autos is applying for conditional use to the address 2618 Sanford Avenue. Conditional use will allow ETS Autos to build an additional building to provide automotive repair services to the inventory belonging to the existing ETS Autos Inc. Public facilities and services available to ETS Autos Inc. and proposed additional building are adequate to serve the new proposed use. There are no adverse effects known, including archaeological, blah, blah, blah. Design of the proposed development enhances the visual effects of the neighborhood. It's compatible with the neighborhood, immediate vicinity. Um, it just, I, I don't see where there was confusion when you, as the president who was submitting, had in a letter that is signed by you stating that it was strictly for a building to do repairs on their cars only. Just something I wanted to point out. Any other questions?
You were saying one of the bases for denial could be what?
About the, about the two properties?
You could find that unified sites, since it's unified ownership, on the record, that we could interrelated, that a unified site plan for this, these parcels and the parcel to the north would be appropriate.
Well, could that just be a condition?
You were saying that a basis for the, that a unified site plan would be appropriate?
The proposed use is an expansion.
Is intermingling.
Ordinarily used.
Mm-hmm.
Again, Mr. Group is offering that as a, um, an issue of concern relative to the dynamics that the board has addressed here with regards to two different types of uses on land commonly owned. Either as a basis of perhaps denying or as a condition perhaps, and Ms. Owawale questioned the process as it relates to, uh, the, the development plan. Condition number one in the staff report does stipulate that the, uh, if approved, then the next step would be that proverbial site plan that we call it out as a final engineering plan that would have to be submitted for, to the city. But that is normatively a staff review and approval process, as Ms. Henson indicated, predicated on all of the design elements complying with the city code. If there were any variances or changes, then it would have to perhaps be considered by this board. However, as a condition of your, the application for you today, you could require that engineering plan, site plan, be presented back to this board for consideration if that was your desire to validate that the site design is consistent with your, your zoning approvals.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. We talked about a ways, the wording or whatever, if we choose to deny this application, is there a condition to be added that would allow, I don't think there's a way to add a condition for the, to do sales and service without an additional cap, cap meeting. Is that correct?
Without another application?
Right, right. Any other questions?
I have a question. We have no objection to doing a additional cap meeting and application. Can it, can a condition be made that if we have successful cap meeting, we don't have to come back in front of this board?
No. New application, not just the cap meeting. You didn't apply, like we.
Okay.
The documents show that there's no application for a sales use on this property. So that means a new application.
And our fundamental land development regulation, Schedule B stipulates that in order to establish auto sales uses in GC2 zoning, a conditional use approved or considered by the Plan and Zoning Commission is required, just as it was done on the 2612, the existing site.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any side discussion?
It's just been made abundantly clear based upon the presentation that the plans for the existing application is, is interrelated with the existing property. And I think it more appropriate to deny based upon, um, wanting to have a unified plan as to how these two properties are going to work together to make sure that it moves forward in an efficient manner and that all those issues are addressed.
Any other questions, statements regarding?
I agree with you.
And I'm, I'm also concerned based upon what was strictly presented on the application, what was put in all the documents as to what were the parameters and everyone who attended the cap meeting or even received notice. There may have been people who didn't go to the cap meeting because they thought it was going to be limited to just repairs of existing of, of the owner's vehicles.
I, I have a question. I understand that, that portion of it on the, with the unity between the two sites, that is, how does that change the dynamics though?
At this point, we were in discussion, so we're technically, I don't think questions are available.
Please, it's, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I was under the assumption Ms. Owawale's statement was a motion and it was seconded by Ms. Bowie.
No, it was part of discussion. It was discussion. I was just saying, what are my?
Board discussion.
Yeah. I was just stating what are my concerns with approval and basing that on the documents that have been presented in the unification of the two properties.
And it's the chairman's, I think, prerogative as to whether or not he wishes to answer the applicant's question.
At this point, I think it would be appropriate if you want to make one last statement prior to, to entertain a motion.
We have no objections to my mistake on maybe misleading or not giving the correct information on the sales issue. And we will go back through that process, hold a cap meeting, um, get all the proper notifications sent out, work with staff on that, come back in front of this board again. On the unity of title, I'm not, I'm, that is a condition and I, maybe I'm incorrect. I'm assuming unity of title means make it one master parcel. Our site plan shows how everything's going to function together and staff would, you know, work with us on if they had any questions on how the existing operations work. You know, on our site plan, we were showing what pavement's getting moved, how the driveway's going to connect. And we were, you know, prepared to put, you know, put together all the easements. That's not normally done at this particular stage. That's done during, during the site plan process. And that's something we're prepared to do. And I know it's your condition number 11 in the report. So I don't want that to be an objectable item. We're prepared to do that.
Anything else you'd like to?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. With that, the public in all is closed. Any other board?
Did anybody forward, did we ask for?
Oh, is there anyone against this motion? Any other for or against? That being said, any more discussion by board? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny the conditional use request to establish vehicle repair at 2618 Sanford Avenue, um, finding that there's a requirement of a unified plan as to the proposed repair site in the existing sales site, which is adjacent to the property.
Second.
We have a motion, Paul Lindsay. A second by Cassandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? The motion is denied, unanimous. Thank you, sir. Move on. Public hearing 3A is also a quasi judicial.
Uh-uh.
Yes, it is. It is. It just wasn't listed, if I'm not, if I'm correct, it wasn't listed.
I sent you an email about, is a complaint amendment.
That's right. It's, that's not quasi, yeah. Okay. Not quasi. Okay. Before I go into introduction, uh, due to business affiliations, uh, McKee Construction is part of the representation here, and I will have to excuse myself from, uh, all matters related to this issue, the voting and or, uh, moving the meeting. And I would like to transfer the gavel to the vice chair, Michael Loder, to handle this one.
You can do that for 3B also.
And also for 3B. Let's do two words with one stone.
Yeah.
There you go, buddy.
Thank you.
You can keep it.
Um, this public hearing, uh, 3A, request to amend the future land use designation from LDR, single family, low density residential, to general commercial and general commercial to industrial. to Industrial for 2.1 acres located 2320 Beardall Avenue. We have received this request. Eileen?
I'll try to keep this short. The 2.14 acre site is located on Beardall Avenue at the corner of Udel, just north of the intersection of Beardall Avenue and East State Road 46 and north of the Orlando-Samford International Airport. On February 8, 2016, the city commission adopted ordinance 4365 to annex said property into the city. At the time of annexation, the property was, it has a low density residential and a commercial future land use designation. It's split. And the applicant has submitted a request to change that low density residential and commercial to industrial to be consistent with its surrounding properties. Per the requirements of the comprehensive plan amendments, the applicant has provided written justification to address the criteria and policy 1-1.1.1 of the comprehensive plan. There is land use objectives and policies that have been provided in your report should be considered, and it is staff's recommendation that the planning and zoning commission conduct a public hearing to determine if the proposed land use is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the city's comprehensive plan and the state's growth policy, growth policy act.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may just also make a comment relative to a correction, since the agenda packet was published, it was brought to our attention that the site vicinity and aerial map that's in your packet had an error relative to what was designated as East 25th Street. And, George, if you can zoom out a little bit, because it had in your packet, you'll have two East 25th Streets. The one at the bottom is indeed State Road 46, East 25th Street. The one that is at the top is correctly East 20th Street, also known as Huey Street. So I just wanted to let, for the record, clarity in case there's any confusion relative to the location of the subject property.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I don't have any.
Applicants, would you like to make any comments?
Hi, board. I'm Maverick with McKee Construction, 790 Monroe Road. I'm just here just to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to speak either for or against this particular pub, this particular item? Not hearing any. I, back to the board for discussion. Hearing none, I'll ask for, if anybody wants to make a motion? Or is there, let me see. Now, do I hear a motion?
I'm going to ask Steph, is there like a Google Maps view of that property? You could, streets there.
Also, just for general reference, and George, if you push it up a little just to get, well, we have, to the south here is State Road 46. On the south side of 46 is the Orlando International Airport property. At the corner of Beardall and 46 is a bar that's in the county. But to the north of it is a small, industrial park and a former roofing company, and it's a pool company now. This is a site that was originally developed for a naturally fresh business. Ironically, as I recall, McKee Construction developed this site. It is a site now that Todd's Tomatoes, as we know, that was long established on 13th Street, has relocated to, so they've expanded and now own and operate their facility right here, which is on the south side of the subject property before you. The, what is now known as Todd's Tomato site does have an out parcel for future commercial, light industrial development. And so while the site that is before you today is joining the greater Midway neighborhood, it is consistent with the, the land uses that have been established in the immediate area. And I would also underscore that this public hearing for the land use amendment as well as the rezoning did warrant a cap meeting, a notification process, and, and so we're recommending approval based on the, the consistency and compatibility of the, the land uses in that immediate area.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend that the city commission approve the request to change the future land use map of the Sanford Comprehensive Plan for approximately 2.14 acres at 2320 Beardall Avenue from LDR SF, Low Density Residential, Single Family, and GC, General Commercial, to I, Industrial.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have a vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approves unanimously.
Just to get for the record that it's going to be 4-0 with one abstention.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to public hearing 3B. This is a quasi judicial matter, and as such requires disclosure of all ex parte communications, investigation site visits, and expert opinions regarding this matter. Any comments from the board?
None.
All right. Eileen, you want to go ahead and read the synopsis?
Sure. This is the same property to which we just made a recommendation on the land use change, so it's in the same place. The request before you at this point is to rezone the property from the existing single family residential zoning and general commercial zoning to a restricted industrial zoning to be consistent with the land use change that was just considered. The staff's recommendation is that the planning and zoning commission conduct a public hearing to determine if the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's comprehensive plan, subject to the approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment.
Mr. Vice Chairman, unless I wasn't listening, this public hearing is a quasi judicial matter and.
You weren't listening.
I apologize.
Any discussion with the board?
No, I don't have anything.
Any additional comments from the applicant? Same address? Yeah, okay. And I don't see anybody here from the public to vote either, or to speak either in favor or deny, so I will entertain either discussion or a motion from the board.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to recommend the city commissioner approve the request, commission approve the request to rezone 2.14 acres with the project address of 2320 Beardall Avenue from SR-1, Single Family Residential, and GC-2, General Commercial, to RI-1, Restricted Industrial, subject to approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
One abstention.
With one abstention. And I'll pass the gavel back to the chair.
Thank you, sir. That should conclude the public call of our hearings. The next item is staff reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you is a copy of the report providing an update on not only recent city commission actions, but those by staff. If you have any questions or comments either at this time or between meetings, don't hesitate to let us know. And indulge me one second, I think I have something else to report to you. Just as an update, since it relates to the chairman's, I, the, as you know, I believe I reported at the last PMZ meeting, the consideration of the ordinance to adopt the design standards during second reading was tabled by the, or continued by the city commission until their March 28th, if I get that right, March 28th city commission meeting. Since then, I have had the pleasure of meeting with a few of our local developers and contractors to review the implementation and other concerns that they have expressed with regards to the design standards. I'm optimistic that I can report back to the commission on March 28th that some of the, the concerns and comments can be advanced. It is unclear at this time whether or not it may warrant having reconsideration by this board, dependent upon the scope of those changes which are still being evaluated. So I want to keep you apprised of how we're making progress with the design standards, which I know this board has spent quite some time and effort to, to give consideration to, so we'll keep you informed in that respect.
Can we ask what those considerations were by the contractors?
The primary one was clarification relative to the applicability of the design standards, which was primarily intended to, to apply to commercial, retail, and office uses. The draft ordinance and codes were also going to, or do include references to office uses within industrial developments, similar to the project that you just, so you might, can appreciate that should the site that is next to now Todd's Tomatoes out in a more remote area need to have the same degree of design standards for consideration as those in our commercial and office portions of our city. So that's one of the primary dynamics that are being evaluated. And then there were some other matters in terms of some clarity and interpretation matters we're trying to reduce, how, just to minimize any, any interpretation challenges by, by the community or by staff.
Thank you. I've been looking at the missile age review information. The conditional use for the outside storage for both ground tanks for quality fab and Wavington Fire, 209 is the old Universal Map, the big blue and white building?
Yes.
And with the outdoor storage, is that empty lot company, is that part of that property, running the turn there?
No, that's a separate.
Separate parcel.
Separate parcel.
Okay, so there'd be no chance of something being stored out there on that grassy area to the south, to the west?
I'm not sure I clearly hear in your question.
Up Sela, across St. John's.
Yes.
As you make the turn, a little church on the left.
No, I, I know where you're referring to.
They're requesting outside storage and above ground tanks for the quality moving their fabrication over to this building.
Yes.
I was wondering if that property was part of Universal Map building and if it was coming into play as force of storage.
Not to my knowledge. Eileen may clarify if.
Well, at this moment, we are working with and expecting revised information as to where their storage elements are going to be as we proceed through the, the review of the conditional use. Right now, what they've proposed to us is having a small storage area in the parking lot area, so.
Far away from it.
Right, it's in the front of the property, and we don't typically allow that type of thing between the building and the road, so we're working with them to see what type of buffers, separations, fencing, things like that. But they have not provided any knowledge to us that they have interest in storing outside of that small contained area.
Bearing in mind, as much as I'm very good friends with those guys, they've had an issue with storage on the 6660 Invacare property, with the side storage behind a fence and a bunch of piping along the front parking lot. So, I think it's somebody, Chuck's a nice guy, however, he fabricates some big stuff.
Right, and we're, you know, through the review process, we are trying to, you know, bet out where that storage could be, and hopefully when we provide a staff report to you, the conditions will be concise as to where they can put things and where they cannot.
Not on the list that I see. The, you mentioned a month or two back, the medical facility at St. John's and Up Sela on the Kelly property that was defenced and all, is that dead, going, any movement, anything?
The Nemours Medical Facility at the northwest corner of St. John's and Up Sela has, is effectively inactive. I have and other staff have tried to reach out to Nemours to find out their intentions to move forward, because not only has this board, the city commission, approved the zoning approvals for that project, the staff has approved the site engineering plans and have, are ready to issue a site development permit and even perhaps building permits. So they've got it to the goal line, we're just not sure why they haven't advanced.
I'm just a little anxious, because that would definitely set a nice precedent along that track of land.
Absolutely. So we hope to see progress in that area very soon. Couple other quick items, if I may, Mr. Chairman. On your staff report, you'll see that the city commission, at their last meeting, I believe it was February 22nd, approved a memorandum, MOU, memorandum of understanding with the Torrey Development Group for the downtown waterfront catalyst sites. I just wanted to underscore that the city's partner, Torrey, is looking to engage the various stakeholders in our community, and one will be this board, the planning and zoning commission. So do anticipate that not only will they be likely coming before you in this forum, but they might be contacting you each individually to participate in this very important process. So you'll learn more about this as the project unfolds, but I just want to give you a heads up that, that that is forthcoming. They are scheduled, the Torrey Development Team, we'll call it, will be back in Sanford the week of March 15th, 16th. That's, they're going to be attending the next Historic Preservation Board meeting, and then the days before and after, I think they'll be trying to arrange meetings with our city commissioners and other, others in our community. So I wanted to share with you that exciting project. We also have, and I may allow Mr. Groot to explain further, the status of a, a pending temporary moratorium on murals that is going to possibly be presented to the city commission at their next meeting on March 12th.
Y'all familiar with the fact that the city commission created the Public Art Commission?
Yes.
Okay. And the Public Art Commission, one of the goals it has is to develop a public arts ordinance, which is something that's pretty much been throughout the nation in, in sensitive jurisdictions, I guess is the best way to say it. It takes a while to develop regulations, as you know, and there have been murals that have been popping up, and this moratorium would just prohibit murals during the interim time that it takes to develop regulations, which would come through you and to the city commission to be enacted. So Christine Dalton, will she be presenting it here?
Aye.
And that moratorium ordinances are land development regulations, because there's, unlike saying something is approved, it's saying you can't do it, so it's still a regulation. And. So it's still a regulation, and that will come to you for a finding of consistency with the comp plan sometime between now and the second reading of the ordinance at the city commission.
So it's going to go to the city commission first?
Well, unfortunately, this sort of got put on the front burner, and so in order to get it enacted quickly, first reading will be on March 14th. Second reading will be, I don't, whatever the date of the.
Well, the following.
Well, I don't know the exact date for second reading, but in any event, first reading will have occurred before you hear the ordinance as to comp plan consistency, which is fine, happens all the time, because you still have to make a finding of consistency or not with the comp plan before it's enacted.
Wanted to at least give you a notice of what's in the queue in that respect. Lastly, just to underscore what, you already have a copy in your agenda packet, which is the scheduled Ethics and Sunshine Law Training, which is required, but if you haven't already, please get with the city board or our office with regards to your land attendance.
Are there any alternate dates if you cannot make either one of those? So can you watch it via recording?
Unfortunately, not with regards to what the city is facilitating with regards to any specific facilitators.
Okay.
But there are other options with regards to fulfilling the training requirements. What I think we need to do better is to follow up with our board members as to what those online or other seminars or webinars are available.
Okay.
I'll give our city court's office.
And I'll need to know that.
There's a ton of online opportunities.
Okay.
This just happens to be the fact that, you know, the executive director of the Ethics Commission and the guru of public records.
Right.
You know, is available on those days.
Right. And that's my preference. My schedule just may not permit this year.
Russ, I do have one question on bullet point number two on the bottom, pre-application conferences. It's to change your use from retail on the first floor to business and professional office on the first floor for a portion of the building at 113 Palm Meadow. That's predominantly a retail area. I mean, is there going to be any kind, if some, I guess if somebody comes in there a year from now and wants to put retail in there instead of office, they have to come back before us to change it back?
No, no, retail is a permitted, it's actually the intended, permitted use.
Right.
Retail.
Right.
The applicant and pending buyer of the property is simply wanting to explore as part of due diligence, the feasibility of getting office use established. So this was a pre-application conference to just explore and understand the process of trying to get office use considered. But at this time, the applicant, pre-applicant, pre-application conference applicant, who is the pending buyer of the property from the city, understands that retail is the intended.
Office uses are allowed, they're just not allowed on the street level, right?
Correct.
So whether that's a big issue to them or not, it seems like it's not anymore, but we shall see.
What is 113?
The closing on that is to occur.
Is it the old jail or?
No, it's across the street, I think.
Old jail.
It is the old jail.
Okay.
But the closing was supposed to occur on March 2nd, it's been extended to March 14th, and it's going to be extended again. We proposed, the city commission, to extend it to the end of March. And, but the buyer would be agreeing to certain restrictions on the property as part of the city.
One final question, that circular brick property on the waterfront, I see them replacing the bricks on there. What's going on?
It's got ran into it.
Yeah, there was a high-speed chaser.
Oh, my God.
Car that actually went into the building.
Brick into block.
And it is amazing that there were no.
fatalities.
Exactly. And the building suffered some damage, but it is being repaired. That's what you were.
And that, is that building owned by the city or?
Kelly's.
Kelly. Okay. I thought it was maybe just renovation.
No.
It is now.
Or renovation.
One clarity question. As far as Torrey Development, you said they would be reaching out to us, and could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I understand that likely there'll be a lot of future due diligence, so please participate in the process of the catalyst sites.
Okay, so I can still maintain my position.
They're doing, for step one is a marketing study for the property, and then part of step two is making sure that everybody's on the same path, the same mindset in the city in terms of what is being proposed there. Okay? And you might be concerned that, well, isn't that an ex parte, isn't it, you know, should you be? Yes, you should be communicating it. It's perfectly fine because what, if all this works out as planned, what would come before you is a development agreement, which would be enacted by ordinance, which is basically making that parcel have its own unique zoning district. So it's legislative, will still disclose everything at public hearings, but it's perfectly all right.
Thank you for the clarification.
And it's important, actually. It's important to have everybody buy into that property, if whatever it is comes.
Are they ready to move forward?
That, they're in a, they're in an evaluation process right now, and there's a point where they can back out, there's a point where the city can back out. And just for the record, the property has not been sold. I understand there was some information out there that that property was sold, it has not been sold.
It's all over five, almost five and a half acres owned by the city of Sanford.
It is an intent to purchase.
The blocks from first street to the lakefront, from Sanford Avenue to Palm Meadow.
Let, real quick, it's an important thing, so I'll go, I'll talk more than I used to talk, plus I want to mention a couple of things. But the idea is for the developer to bring their, everyone's jumping, the developer to bring their wherewithal and their ability to market, develop, you know, find out what the market will take and all that, and bring their, all their resources. At the same time, the city brings the land and potentially some other types of infrastructure improvements. And together, a development agreement is crafted, which is brought before you, taken to the city commission, which perfects the type of development and who's going to do what on that property. Okay? With the idea that it will be, once developed, what has been called the catalyst site.
Boost everything.
Which will be a catalyst for his pristine's development of the historic districts, as has been anticipated for a long time, and have all those upstairs filled with offices. So the idea is it to be a catalyst to many other things. But it's, the first part is to make sure the market's right, make sure the city's going to contribute what it's going to contribute, and the developer's going to contribute what it's going to contribute, and it's clear, and it's vetted, and that everybody is happy because it's, if it all goes well, it will be a catalyst, and it will be there for a long time.
And you'll learn more about the process and the elements of this as we move along. We weren't preparing today to give you an overview, but Torrey will. Yeah, Torrey will. Obviously, this is the same general area that the city commission, the city hired Little John Associates to do the extension of the CRA, which necessitated changes to the comprehensive plan and land development regulations, which is more considered. So you saw those presentations on Little John and the sites downtown. Well, this is the next level where Torrey, as Lonnie indicated, will apply their expertise and their analyses to generating what you're often familiar with developing master plans, land development master plans, which can vary as far as what might actually be the final product. But what Torrey's going to be developing here as a result of this development order that comes before you and then the city commission, is actually more of a refined actual design projects, elements that, and phases of how and what will actually be marketed to be developed on the site. And just for your information, this process is, with some master planning, can be long-term, and they sit on shelves. The city hasn't, has not had a lack of master planning of our various communities and areas of our city from time to time. But what Torrey intends to do here is, is a development order and plan that will be taken to the next level and actually get under construction. And moreover, the timeline is rather advanced, and I'm looking to do this over even a year period. They're anticipating on having that development order to the city commission. Their targeted timeline is like August of this year. So you can see how this has been unfolded rapidly with a lot of analyses and communications, public meetings, and the likes.
Up front. So this is that, it won't, the end product won't be like Russ said, something that stays on the shelf. It's something that the developer says, go.
This is viable and what the city community wants.
I did some background on Torrey, and they're pretty, they're strong. And I guess what happens is they're going to take that Little John recommendation, which started, that's the foundation, and basically put something there that's viable, that's financeable, that has, they have contacts from other developments, bringing in some of their players. With that being said, with the, when do we vote? Next Tuesday, the Super Tuesday for us?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth, I'm sorry. Yeah, because I'm absentee. I guess the consideration in front of the city, for the city council having the ability to grant tax incentives is, it could be a nice portion of that same conversation because I'm sure they'll look for some of those also. But it'd be nice to have something moving up there, it really would.
That's all that staff has.
Well, I have two things, real quickly. I don't like to get, as you know, I don't like to get in front of y'all, and, or have you get in front of things. I like you to take applications as they come. But there are two parcels of real property that may be of interest now for you all to look at, you know, before something is, comes before you. And one is, and I'll pass this out, the school district's historic museum at 301 West 7th, you know, it's for sale. Okay, I'm going to pass this out, and he will. But it's open for view next Monday morning at nine o'clock. So this is the time when there's nothing pending, there's no, nobody proposing anything. If you want to go look at the property, you can. So I just thought you'd like to know that.
New building.
And the other thing is, and like I said, I don't like you all to get in front of things.
Right.
But just so you'll know, the New Tryz Missions property on the lake, it has been put up for sale too. An asking price of two point. If you want to see the details, I can email them to you, but it's, the asking price is 2.5 million, so.
Does that include all their buildings or just that major building?
What I could tell from the, it was a black and white rendition, and I have color issues, and I could, it looked like it was just the waterfront, the old hotel.
Right.
I couldn't tell if it was the stuff across the street, which, it looks like it's just the waterfront.
It's my understanding it's the waterfront.
Okay, thank you, because I just had vision issues. So anyway, but that was interesting that, you know, because that might be something that, you know, as you see, the catalyst of interest along the waterfront, maybe that's part of.
My wife has wanted that building for years.
That was a beautiful building.
The significance of the two properties you just mentioned.
Torrey, go for it.
That's all I have.
Get along, Marcus, Mikey.
Yeah, I would like to get a, if you can send me the information on that, I appreciate it.
I'll send it.
As for staff, I guess we have no citizens participation.
I just want to say I will not be here for the next meeting. I have court hearing. I have a court hearing in Palatka.
It's an excuse.
April 7th, right? Yes, April 7th.
Commissioners' reports?
I have none.
Of being none. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Have a great.